No. Good evening, welcome to the Monday, April 7th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call the members.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councillor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna. Here, Councillor Nowosowski. Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. First, I approve of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 24th.
All favor or opposed?
Then we have a motion presented by Council President Silvestri that the City Council read into the record and approve a resolution of condolence on behalf of former City Councillor John P. Jordan, who passed away on April 5th of 25 over this weekend. And I have a resolution of condolence right here to read into the record. Whereas former City Councillor John P. Jordan has rendered conspicuous faithful and honorable public service to the citizens of the city of Revere in his duties as a City Councillor, and whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has called former City Councillor John P. Jordan to His eternal reward, and whereas the sad calling from our midst of former City Councillor John P. Jordan leaves a vacancy in the official family of the City Council of the city of Revere that will be difficult to fill and a memory that will long be cherished. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the City Council extend to the family of former City Councillor John P. Jordan on behalf of the citizens of Revere our heartfelt sympathy and sincerest regrets on their profound loss. And be it further resolved that in recognition of former City Councillor John P. Jordan's service to the citizens of the city of Revere, that the City Council pays sincere tribute to his memory by its spreading upon the official records of the Revere City Council, a copy of this resolution of condolence.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. City Councillors? Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. John Jordan was a great City Councillor, a stand-up guy. We didn't always agree. But the one thing you knew about John Jordan is he loved the city of Revere. Everything he did up here was, in his view, for the betterment of the city of Revere. Like I said, we didn't always agree, but we could be, and I think we have that kind of a council right now, that we can agree to disagree and not be, you know, angry about it. But he was a, he was a, he bled Revere if I had to put it into words. I didn't prepare anything because it was a shock to hear that he had passed away. But he was certainly someone, he was a friend, and he was a wonderful colleague, and he'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I had the honor of serving with John back in 1978, '79, and we got along so well, and he did love the city of Revere, and he'd do anything he could to make every ward in this city better. He was a great guy. We'll miss him. We have his dad's picture up here, and as a state rep. And it's sad, I knew he was failing, and, you know, I wasn't surprised when I got the word. But he's a great, great guy, and we'll all miss him and remember him dearly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Janino.
Thank you. Again, John was a outstanding person in the city. I remember going back to the 90s, delivering council packets, having a lot of conversation with him. He'll be missed, and it was sad news to hear.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other council members? Okay, if we can all rise in a moment of silence. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number four, Deborah Nealon of Four Kids Only will conduct a presentation relative to the grant Four Kids Only has received to provide additional services for after-school programs in the city of Revere.
Hello. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Debbie Nealon Keegan, and I am the Director of Four Kids Only After School Programs. Some of you may know us here in the city of Revere as Youth Emotion on Broadway. Ready? Yeah, thank you. So, thank you so much for allowing us the time to present in front of you today. Four Kids Only After School, I did have slides or in your packets that are in front of you right now, and I think they might be somewhere up on the screen. Yeah, okay. So, a little bit about our public charity. Four Kids Only After School was founded, I was actually the, one of the co-founders, 40 years ago in the community of Winthrop, 1984. I was previously a special education teacher, and I also was one of the alternative high school directors in the Commonwealth of Mass. And we were at the time, in the 80s, transporting a significant number of children from the city of Revere to our program in Winthrop. And I received a phone call from Superintendent Ty, Carol Ty at the time, saying, "We need after-school programs here in our city." So, with a competitive bid process, Four Kids Only was awarded a contract here to work with the Revere Public Schools in 1998. I personally did not graduate from Revere Public Schools, however, my father is a proud graduate, Joe Grasso, and my family is all from Revere. My aunt, many of you may know her, is a nurse, Connie Millerick, and she's my godmother. And I also have cousins that have taught in the district, so we're all a family of educators. We also have programs outside of the city. We serve over 1,000 children. Presently, we have 1,600 children that we serve every day in communities such as Revere, Chelsea, Everett, Peabody, and Winthrop. So, we primarily work in urban communities. Here, in the city of Revere, we serve about 105 children every day at our program on Broadway. These children are kindergarten through grade five, and we have a contract through the Department of Early Education and Care in that we are a licensed childcare provider. Many of our children that come to us receive special education services during the school day through an IEP, 504 plan, or they receive counseling. We provide transportation every day from the Garfield, the Hill, the Lincoln, and the Wayland Schools. We wish we could provide transportation from all the schools, however, with the cost of transportation and our ability to pay for two buses, we're not able to make the circle. If anybody has any friendly suggestions, we're always open to serve the other children in schools that are on our waitlist right now. We also here in the city of Revere, which is why we were invited to speak to you. And if I can just back up a little bit, the reason why we're here is because Councillor McKenna came up to me, as well as the mayor, to make sure that we were okay during the bridge construction, the first phase. And when we were talking, Councillor McKenna said, "You know, so much is going on in that building that I don't believe the city is aware of." And we started talking about one of the contracts that we just received through the Department of Early Education, which is a homeless contract here in the city. So, she invited me to come to speak to you about the many contracts that we have here, which many of you may not be aware of at this point in time. And I really want to explain to you and the public at large that there's so many opportunities here for our city's children. And we do have a, we have about 40 seats right now that we could serve in our building. Many of those seats are free of charge based on the needs of the population. With me, by the way, is Nick Jean-Baptiste, who is our District Director here in the city, who can also answer any questions that you might have. So, one of the grants that we have is, and we're the sole provider here in the city for school-aged children, is a grant with the Department of Children and Families. That means that any child that has an open case with DCF that has need of service can come to our program immediately, free of charge. And these children can come all year round, not just after school, but in the summertime, on school vacation weeks. Every day, we're open until 5:30 in the evening, and on school vacation weeks, we open at 7:30 in the morning, as well as the summertime, until 5:30. We close only 16 days a year for major holidays. So, those children are children that have been, you know, deemed with abuse or neglect in the homes. And in addition to that, we have a, we just received a homeless contract, which means that any family in the city of Revere who has been determined to be homeless can come to our programs immediately, free of cost. Now, these are school-aged children only because we're an exclusive licensed school-age provider for grades kindergarten through eight. At the present time, we're kindergarten through five, as I told you, because we ran out of space, and we had to make a hard decision a few years ago, right before COVID, and that we had to have our middle school population exit at that time, which was a very hard decision for us, but we had to make that decision. Again, we feel there's a need for middle schoolers, and we would do anything to open up a middle school program here in the city. We have a huge waitlist for middle schoolers, especially when they age out of our program. What you see on the slide here is our percentage of enrollment by referral and funding. As I explained to you, we're a nonprofit public charity governed by a board of directors. A substantial 53% of our children are funded through the state voucher program. It's a childcare voucher that income-eligible working families can receive, or families with other demonstrated hardships, families that are in the military, families of children raised by grandparents, fostered children, et cetera. So, those children apply for a voucher, and just like a housing voucher, and they can come to our program with a subsidized rate by the Commonwealth of Mass, and they pay their family portion. 22% of our families do pay privately. However, most of the private-pay families don't pay the full rate of $26 a day. We use offsetting dollars from the United Way, for example, or from our Helping Families Fund, which is funds that we raise through our annual gala or other fundraisers that we have. We also have other philanthropists that have donated to us to help scholarships for children in addition to the city dollars that have given, provided to us through the Small Cities Grant Fund that we applied for, and we thank you for that. So, in addition to that, we have, as I explained, 10% CDVG scholarship dollars and 15% of DCF. A little bit about our team, and then I can stop so you can ask questions. We have here in the city of Revere a District Director, and that's Nick Jean-Baptiste, who oversees a site, a full-time site coordinator, Jenny Ruiz Hernandez.
Who's with me today.
And we have a full-time behavioral health coordinator, Olivia King. In addition to that, we have out-of-school time educators, both full and part-time, that work for us. We have a family greeter that sits at the door every day to make sure that the doors are secure and safe for the children. We also have inclusion specialists. We are a count-me-in provider, which means that we do not believe in exclusion of any child. All children in the city of Revere are welcome, embraced, and celebrated and appreciated for their differences. So, if a child is having a difficult time, we use funding dollars to help provide for inclusion specialists so they can be mainstreamed in the classroom, or we give them a one-on-one aid, if that's what we feel they need in order to be successfully mainstreamed. In addition to that, we have enrichment specialists, and these are community specialists that come to us to provide special services and programs for children, such as a soccer clinic, or a baseball clinic, or an arts clinic, or a music clinic. And those are community members that volunteer. And also, right now, we just received an after-school, out-of-school time state grant, which will allow for payment of those specialists. So, if you know of anybody that would like to give their time to our program to teach a class once or twice a week for one hour, we embrace that and would love for them to join us. If you see here, 65% of our staff reside in the city of Revere. We do our best to do our outreach efforts to employ residents here in the city. 70% of our staff graduated from Revere High School. 40% speak a second language. 80% of college graduates or completed some college coursework. And we are very proud right now that three are in the process of receiving an out-of-school time apprenticeship certificate through the Mass Department of Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development. FKO for Kids Only After School, we will be the first in the Commonwealth of Mass and the first in the country to have our apprentices graduate this year. We have 22 apprentices in our organization, three of them coming from the city of Revere. They come to work every day at 10:00 a.m. while the children are in school, and we have an earn-to-learn model where they get paid to go to school and to learn with their colleagues. And then they also have a mentor, a one-to-one mentor. They belong to a community of practice, and it's a very cutting-edge, exciting career opportunity that we hope can lead to other career pathways, or perhaps they stay on as an out-of-school time educator. And then I think I'll leave it here. The rest of the slides are about what happens at FKO. The last two pages of your packet talks about our community partnership opportunity that I said that we're looking for community members to teach a class in art, cooking, dance, gardening. 'Tis the season of gardening. We'd love to start our own vegetable garden and plant garden, if anybody is enjoying that kind of thing, science, sports, theater, yoga. And finally, you will see our final page are all the partners that support our organization. The Department of Early Education and Care, we receive funding from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Department of Children and Families. We are a United Way Mass Bay partner. We also receive philanthropy dollars from Cummings Foundation, Alden Foundation, Amelia Peabody, and et cetera. As you'll see here, and we just received a wonderful grant through Mass General Hospital to provide mental health counseling and support for our children and families that are in need right now. As you all know, we have found after the pandemic, a huge slide in development, and we're finding our children and staff are appearing like five years developmentally delayed. I shouldn't say delayed, but behind where they used to be, right? Because they lost that socializing opportunity. So, we're putting a lot more resources into that. We also find with a lot of our newcomers, migrant populations here, that they need extra supports. So, we're putting funding into that as well. So, I'm going to leave it there, and any questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deb. Great job. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Deb, for coming up here. I mean, we had this, we have this building on Broadway, and people drive by it all the time, and people don't know what's going on inside. And you just gave a wealth of knowledge to these people that have no idea what was happening in there. I mean, I really do think that the public, if it's needed to take advantage of this, excuse me. So, I thank you for coming up here and sharing what you do. I mean, it's just incredible what you do. And keep on doing a great job for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor.
Thank you all for your support.
Councillor Hermio?
Thank you, Mr. President, Deborah. Nice to see you, and thank you so much for joining us. I really appreciate the work that Four Kids Only does. For a variety of reasons, I know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of the parents and families that you're serving are able to go back into the workplace because of the services that you serve. Can you tell us a little bit about that? What, you know, the economic impact that early education and care has for the labor force and for economic development for a city?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, not only is Four Kids Only here to support the out-of-school time needs of the school-aged child through expanded learning opportunities, enrichment opportunities, bringing learning alive, right, through meaningful experiences. We are truly supporting the working families. That is part of our mission. And we have found that so many of our children, families are able to continue to go to work because they have a safe place for their child to go after school. We've also found through our data that families are saying to us that not only do they feel more comfortable while at work, they are being, they are being, reporting to us that their work productivity is better during the out-of-school time hours. When the kids are in school, they feel comfortable, right? Because they're safe, and they're with, you know, wonderful educators. But many of these children would be on the streets after school if they didn't have a safe place to go. So, I think this is clearly a path to economic mobility and viability, and we see it every day in our work. Thank you for asking that question.
Yeah, thank you, Deb. And I'm sorry, I have a few more questions for you, just because I am concerned about some of the things that are happening, not so much at our, at Four Kids Only. But, and I want to just get a sense of what the landscape looks like over the next few years. Of course, we know that the federal administration officially just closed the Head Start office and the regional office here in Boston. Head Start, for those of you who are here with us, provides early education and care for a lot of kids. And I just want to make sure that your program's not affected, and if it is, how we can do, how and what we can do from the council to ensure that your services aren't impacted. And then the final question is, like, are there any municipalities in the state that are providing additional resources to early education and care to ensure that folks can go back to work? So, I guess first the Head Start question, making sure that that's not impacting you. I know it's impacting a lot of working families, but maybe it's not impacting your program in particular. And then, you know, what municipalities are doing would be great to know.
Thank you. So, we do not receive Head Start funding because we're a school-age provider. However, we are very worried about the certainty of our grant-funded program because many of our grants start at the federal government, go to the state government, and we're seeing cuts happen, as you know, daily, maybe hourly. So, we worry because there is going to be a ripple effect if these cuts continue to happen. The state legislators are going to have to make some hard decisions, and most of our funding is through state government dollars.
And some of those hard decisions, right, have they frozen the childcare financial assistance grants right now?
Yeah, so, right.
Can you help us for the edification of the group?
Yeah, so, I didn't want to bring the doom into it, but however, state dollars have been frozen. Vouchers have been frozen right now. That's why we are really trying to leverage philanthropy dollars as best we can. But as you know, private dollars come and go. They usually give you, like, a little grant for $10,000, and how many kids can you serve with that, right? So, right now, the state has frozen all childcare vouchers for income-eligible families. The only children that can receive a voucher right now are those children, as I talked to you, that are homeless or that have open cases with DCF.
Thank you, Deb. And income, when you say income-eligible, what are those eligibility limits? Just sorry.
Yeah, so, it depends on the family size, and I can get that to you. There's a whole, like, matrix in terms of how many children are in the family, whether it's a two-parent family, et cetera. So, and it's a sliding fee scale. I have a whole subsidy team that manages that. We have family enrollment specialists that speak multiple languages. If anybody in the community is interested, please. I ask that you don't give up. Like, I want community members to know that we're going to put you on a waitlist, and we're going to try to move you as quickly as possible. One thing I can say about Four Kids Only After School is I have a big voice up the hill. They know me well. That's what happens after 40 years, right? So, we will advocate for Revere citizens to make sure that our voices, their voices are heard. We will speak on their behalf and do the best we can to get them off, to get that state waitlist open. But again, like I say, so much of it is in the powers right now of administration up at the federal government.
And then the question about the municipalities, is, are there any municipalities that are doing like their own voucher systems or anything like that?
Yes, yep. So, there are municipalities, we are working with another city that is right now dedicating city dollars to close the gap for so many children that may not meet the income eligibility requirements. You have to be, like, under the 50% average income, and so many of the families, they're like right on the cutting edge, or they're hard-working families, right? And so, they may not be deemed poverty, but they are in need of childcare. So, this community that we're working with has been able to address this need by putting in city dollars on a annual basis to support the needs of children. And also, they're allowing us use of school space for free in all of their, in their whole complex, which is really helpful because occupancy cost, as you know, is a lot of, a lot of your budget.
Thank you, Deb. And thank you, Mr. President, for your leisure there.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Deb, thanks so much for being here. Nick, thanks so much for being here. I'm glad you touched on one thing I've always wondered about, and that was the middle school students. If there was any programming in the works or maybe in the future, you know, any future plans for them? And, you know, some of them might look at FKO and say, "Well, the kids are too old. They're middle school kids." But anytime you can talk about structure, the kids being in the gyms, the kids being in the computer labs, the library after school, I think that's a great thing. And I'm just curious if there's anything in the future for the middle school programs. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. The mayor has also been talking to me about this because it's an interest of his as well. And I think there's a lot of, like, not spot programs, but like, you know, programs like, you know, a basketball pickup class or an after-school club that meets the needs, some of the needs of middle school children. We're talking about the middle school child that really needs a place to go every day in order to be safe. Like, these are the kids, many of them high-risk, that need to know, and the families need to know, that every day after school until 5:30, my child is someplace safe, and I don't have to worry when I go to work. So, I think that's the need right now in this community. And I know your father was like a huge champion on this, and I feel like this is something that if we can find a way, and I know the mayor has talked to me several times about trying to figure out a way to use spaces. I feel like it would really allow for these children to thrive in a lot greater way. Because what happens in the fifth grade, we make it a celebratory for them, and Nick can talk about this better than I, but like, we have a graduation. They don't want to go. They don't want to leave. They've been with us since kindergarten. And all of a sudden, you're turning into a sixth grader, and we're like, "All right, fly, birdie." And they're like, "I don't want to fly. I want to stay. My sister's here. My brother's here." So, like, those kinds of, I think it's really important, and if they could have a place of their own that they know they can go after school every single day, I think that would matter. We unfortunately don't have the space on Broadway because we can only serve 140 children every day, and that's really stretching it. We like to keep the number at 120 in order to have every child thrive in the best way they can. So, thanks for asking that question because that's a real priority for me. And if, if anybody has any ideas, we're in. We're in, and we'll help make it happen.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like an old man. I, I remember you from many years ago, and I have to congratulate you on where you've come. And Revere was at the beginning stages when you first came before us here, and you've, was pre-building, before the building and all that stuff. And you became a real partner. I had asked you to be a partner with the city, and you stepped up to the plate and... I had asked you to be a partner with the city, and you stepped up to the plate. I'm proud of what you've done, and your program is a model for, you know, you've helped a lot of families and you're still helping a lot of families. And unfortunately, we're in crazy times, and it would be nice to have the older kids stay, but at least you're getting them to that stage. And I want to thank you for all you've done for the city of Revere, and thank you for being a good partner, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Deb, thanks for being here. I know that, I'm surprised we haven't met yet, we, my school has done work with you in the past where you've had kids come to our program as well. So I just want to tell you, I've seen this, how it works firsthand, I've been in the facility, and I'm really happy that you guys chose Revere as home. So I just wanted to thank you very much, and thank you for coming tonight with the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Deb, thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
Okay, if anyone that's a Revere resident has something to say on any motion, please come up, name, address, and the motion you'll be speaking on. You have two minutes.
Anthony Tuttler, Motion 30, 111 Breeden's Lane. About the proposed term limits for city councilors, I am currently in opposition largely because I believe it hinders the competitive spirit of politics, that same spirit we see the broader country that in many instances drives innovative solutions and essentially brings the best out of all of us. If there is a newcomer in the field of politics, they should be given the opportunity to prove themselves, even if it is against a seasoned veteran. In essence, meritocracy rewards. When our elected officials are perceived to have done a good job, they will be rewarded by the electorate. Conversely, do not underestimate the voting population in Revere. They are sharp enough to ascertain when an elected official uses their position for nefarious purposes. While term limits may increase the under-candidate's chances of being elected, I believe the competitive dynamic of running against an established name benefits the newcomer. So for those of you in the audience and those watching at home who feel discouraged, an election is your opportunity to hold your elected officials accountable. Instead of eliminating the candidates in the race by determining them out, let's keep the field open, not deprive ourselves of good quality options, and I would encourage the council to echo my opposition.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Okay, that is closed. Madam Clerk?
Council item number five, unfinished business. Petition submitted by National Grid to install a pole across from 55 Walnut Ave, beginning at a point approximately 134 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Shirley Ave and Walnut Ave, and continuing approximately 17 feet in an east direction.
Petitioner? Is this you? Councilor Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the last meeting, nobody from National Grid has reached out to me. They have not marked anything for pole location, they have not done, uh, dig-safe locations, and at this point, you know, I said I was against it before, I'm still against it now, and I ask that we shoot it down. Thank you.
Any other city councilors? Okay, Councilor Zambudo?
I got a green light, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I would just ask to table it, and maybe it can be worked out.
Councilor?
I disagree. I, I think we've tried to work it out. They have not reached out to us for over a month, and I think it's time to let it go and let them move on, let them find another place to put this.
Thank you. Councilor?
I'm sorry, to put the antenna. Has nothing to do with our daily operation, and I just want to let it go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. That was actually my question, is this to, for service or anything like that? But it's an antenna, so, you know, we got two people last time, now we got nobody today. So I demand the next time they're here, we get three representatives from National Grid. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can we roll call?
Again, the question is always asked of the appropriate city councilors, and yes or no, randomly requested, no votes or deny. Shall the city council grant the relief requested by National Grid to install a pole at 55 Walnut Avenue? Councilor Agenzio?
No.
No, Councilor Cogliandro?
No.
No, Councilor Janino?
Nope.
No, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Nope.
No, Councilor Haas?
No.
No, Councilor Hermio?
No.
No, Councilor Kelly?
No.
No, Councilor McKenna?
No.
No, Councilor Novoseltsky?
No.
No, Councilor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council President Silvestri?
No.
No, the petition by National Grid has been denied. Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had three appointments, and I was very impressed with all of them. They were just fantastic. Their, what they were saying, it was just wonderful. The, so I would like to ask the council to vote them out favorably, favorably tonight.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as follows? Reappointment of Shaima Husani to the Human Rights Commission, Lark Logan to the Cultural Council, and Sheila Johnson to the Human Rights Commission. Shall the city council confirm those appointments as reported by Chairwoman McKenna? Councilor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Mr. President?
Councilor?
I'd like to motion to suspend the rules and take up item number 15.
Madam Clerk, may suspend the rules? Under suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So, order.
Council item number 15, communication from the Chief Financial Officer relative to the memorandum of agreements for patrol officer, for police patrol officers and police
Good afternoon, honorable counsel. I'm here with my CFO, our CFO, and we wanted to present, we're happy to present, after nine months of intense negotiations, I think I'd say the intense, you know, a little arm-twisting, right, too soon? We were able to reach an agreement with both the patrol officers and superior officers unions. I won't speak too much into the details, I think you have them in your packets. I know that a few members of the police department, both representing unions, may wish to speak, but I just wanted to say that we heard the plight from the police department. We also understand that it's a changing workforce, and it has been for a number of years. And we, we look to serve the needs of that changing workforce to make sure that Revere is an advantageous community to work in, because we know that when we have a good working police department, it's going to reflect positively on the, on the representation we see on the streets, interactions we see with our young, young adults, and of course, the protection that they provide to all of our homeowners, travelers, and business owners. And I'm just really excited that we're able to get this, get this deal done. And with that, and I know the next council meeting, you'll have one of our last contracts that will officially be signed. That'll clear the deck for all of our contracts for the next few years. So, congratulations to both Patrol Officers Union and the Superior Officers Union, and of course, congratulations to the city of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable counsel, I'm Sergeant Joe Internacola, and here with the members of both patrol officers, superior officers associations. We're here to speak in support of the memorandum of agreement in front of you today. After eight or nine very long months of negotiating, we're able to come out with a fair deal for both the city of Revere and the police department. We discussed the needs of the current workforce and the demands of our officers. Mayor Keefe and his administration recognized the call for support to our department and delivered on a promise to invest not only in our quality of working conditions, but our quality of life, which will in turn be the betterment of the community's safety. And that's what's important to us. Changing the schedule is one of the big factors, and I don't want to go off-script too much, but it was a big deal. Some of us have been advocating for this for over 13 years, and to get it done under this administration, it's in front of you today. We couldn't be more happier with that for everyone involved.
Sergeant Hickey with the Revere Superior Officers Union, Vice President. I want to thank you all for hearing us, especially I want to thank Mayor Keefe and his administration. I saw Mr. Visque sitting back there. He, he knows we went through some intense, intense talks, but they were all in good faith. We tried to iron out every detail, and this was sort of a show of Mayor Keefe investing in not only the quality of our, our working conditions, but the quality of our life. Truly makes a big difference, and I think you're going to see a huge, drastic change in, you know, the way we police our community. So I want to thank you.
Joe Duca, Revere Police Officers Association, union president. I just want to thank the council, I want to thank the mayor, wherever he may be. There he is. Thank you very much, and especially Mr. Rich Visque here. It's been a, been a long time coming for this. We've been going back and forth for a while, but here we are, and we appreciate your time. And thank you very much.
Thank you all. Okay, we have two separate roll calls. Mayor Keefe? Any city councilors?
Yes.
Councilor Hermio?
Mr. President, I'm just really excited about this. You know, first of all, I know that there's been long negotiations, Mr. Mayor, and of course, really appreciate you, this contract on behalf of the, of the workers. But I will say, and I would like to remind the workers, this is your win because you were together because of your collective bargaining rights, because you have, you have that right to be a unit as you negotiate against the boss. The boss happens to be the mayor, not a bad boss, but boss nonetheless. So, so, you know, just remind yourselves of that, that this is a hard-earned win for your hard-earned work. On a personal note, I'd like to note that I lost a couple of patrolmen who were in my fantasy league because the four-on-four-off was not allowing them to fully be vested in my football, fantasy football league. So I'm glad now I can probably get them back in because they'll be well-rested and they'll be able to deal with my shenanigans as the commissioner of said league. But with that said, congratulations to the patrolmen, the superior officers, and I really do hope those guys come back to my league because I'm running out of people. But nonetheless, and congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, for, for getting this done for the city.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Janino?
Congratulations. Long time coming, the four-on-four, and I'm glad you guys got it. I'm glad you had to work with it, and afford to work with this. Keep up the good work, and thank you, and be safe.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate the mayor and the police. This kind of collaboration is, it's getting to be routine up here, and that's pretty good. So, kudos to the administration and, and kudos to the men and women that work hard and deserve what you got. But this is, this is what we should all be doing, is collaborating for the better of the city, and this is a perfect example. And thank you all.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just thrilled that we were able to come to an agreement and that it's going to benefit both the city, but mostly it's going to benefit our police officers. You guys do way more than most people know about, so I want to personally thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making all this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the Patrolman's Union and the Superior Officers Union for working really diligently to get this contract signed. And I wish you nothing but the best of luck, and take care of our streets, and please stay safe, Godspeed.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Haas?
I just want to thank the mayor and the, the police union for all their hard work. I know it was a long, grueling negotiation with Rich Visque at the helm, but I'm, congratulations. Thanks for all you guys do for the city and its residents. I'm happy for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know by a lot of you guys, because I've had you in school, and I know by talking to you, you weren't happy with what was going on. And it's so nice that the mayor and the police department have reached a great agreement between the both of you and both departments, and, and it should help with your, you know, everyday life, because I know that, I have a friend that has two sons on the Revere Police, and I, she, they were miserable because they had to cut, they had duty, and then they had to go home and go to sleep, and then they had to go back to work. So, this should help you guys, you know, relax, go on vacation maybe, take a day off, whatever. But morale is big, morale is huge. So, and if we have good morale in the city, we'll have good policing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. Congratulations. It was, we've been fighting for four and four for a few years now, you guys got it, and congratulations, a breath of fresh air, and protect our city. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the memorandum of agreement between the city of Revere and the Revere Police Patrol Officers Association covering the period of July 1, 24 to June 30, 27? Councilor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. And shall the city council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the memorandum of agreement between the city of Revere and the Revere Police Superior Officers Association covering the period of July 1, 24 to June 30, 27? Councilor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Back to the regular order of business.
Next up is the zoning Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, the zoning Subcommittee met at 5:15 this afternoon with one item on the agenda, 25-075, Trichillo Development for 114 Shirley Ave, Revere. The committee voted favorably, and I would ask for a roll call.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council grant the relief requested for 114 Shirley Ave, subject to the conditions as reported out by the zoning Subcommittee? Councilor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hare Mio?
No.
No, Councilor Kelly?
No.
No, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to those conditions. Next up is the Economic Development Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Garino Swaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. It was reported out with a favorable recommendation from the Economics Development Subcommittee to convey all tax title properties to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, with Hitchborn being specified as unbuildable. So it was a favorable recommendation. I ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve the conveyance of certain tax title properties to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hare Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo is absent, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the tax title properties have been conveyed to the Affordable Housing Trust Communications, calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Robert Celovich as a constable in the City of Revere.
Refer to appointments.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Brian Harkins to the Public Art Commission.
Refer to appointments.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Drew Bunker to the Board of Health.
Refer to appointments.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the chief financial officer requesting a public hearing on an ordinance further amending free cash distributions to stabilization funds.
Mr. Viskey?
Thank you. Good evening. Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. I'm here before you to, first of all, want to let everybody know that the city did get its certification of free cash, an amount of 4.45 million. That's, we did pretty good for fiscal year '25. We had some good conservative budget, had some good revenue estimates, and happy to report that we turned back 4.45 million from the general fund, and with that, we are looking to reallocate the city's different stabilization funds as follows. Right now, currently, we put 15% of our general stabilization fund, our free cash, we put 15%. We're not looking to change that, but we did adopt some new stabilization funds, so we'd like to modify the capital improvement stabilization fund, which is currently at 20%. We'd like to bring that down to 15%, and then we want to begin to contribute 10% of the city's free cash to the Revere High School Construction Trust Fund. That's a fund that you, this body adopted a year and a half ago, two years ago, and it's beginning to show some promise with some funding that we'll desperately need. This body also did approve a drainage, stormwater, and culvert stabilization fund that has not had any money appropriated to it, and I'm happy to report that 10% of this will fund the first $440,000 of that. We have some water and sewer personnel here, I'm sure they're happy to hear that. Want to bring down the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from 10% to 5%. And then the last one is our other post-employment benefits, which is basically our retirees' health insurance trust fund, and put 5% of our certified free cash into that. We've historically put $250,000 a year, but we'd like to kind of have it an even distribution based upon percentages. This is good for our bond rating and our financial policies and procedures, which we'll update once hopefully these get ordained. That would commit 60% of our annual free cash to various trust funds. We'd like to leave that 40% available for other things that come up, year-end transfers, funding shortfalls that we may have due to different operational needs, but I recommend that we adopt these. I think it's good policy, and happy to answer any questions on that. Otherwise, I'm happy to come to the open meeting and discuss it more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any councilors?
Mr. Chair?
Councilor Hare Mio?
I guess just for the layperson at home, can you explain to, can you explain to us what the reduction in percentage means for these individual accounts?
Well, I mean, it all is based upon what's certified in free cash, so it's 5% versus 10%, and, you know, 20%, 15% instead of 20%, so I can do the math on what that means.
What's the practical impact of that reduction?
It just depends on how much free cash is certified. Again, it's a percentage of this year is 4.45 million. If we have a great year and we have $10 million, 5% of 10 million is obviously a different number, but it's really, to me, what's important is the allocation of the percentages whereby we're putting 60% of our free cash in reserves. We're not using it to fund the budget, we're not using it to balance the budget, we're putting this in our reserves. These stabilization funds, for those who don't know, the interest stays with the fund, it doesn't go to the general fund, so any interest earned on these trust funds, which we have actively managed by professional trust fund managers, that money stays with the fund, so hopefully it helps boost those balances for if and when we need those funds to do certain things that align with the purpose of the trust. So again, I can't put a dollar on it.
Are we putting more money into the individual trust funds, or are we?
Well, again, we're putting 5% less than we did per the ordinance in the capital improvement stabilization, and we're putting 5% less than the ordinance in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but inversely, we're putting 10% of our free cash in the high school construction trust fund whereby we had no allocation, and likewise for drainage, stormwater, and culvert stabilization, which is new, there was nothing attached to that, so that 10%. So if you looked at it last, current policies, allocate 50% of the free cash into four accounts. Now we're looking to allocate 60% of it into the six accounts as listed on this memo.
Can you give me the philosophy behind cutting the capital and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund transfers?
Yeah, to fund the high school construction trust fund and the drainage, stormwater, and culvert stabilization fund. It wasn't as if we targeted that, but that just seemed like a reasonable allocation based upon, you know, we don't want to spend 100% of it, and we don't want to go less than 50, so 20% was the highest allocation that we brought down. You can think of the high school stabilization, you can think of the high school construction trust fund as basically another form of a capital improvement stabilization, so in some respects, we're adding to that. And the drainage, stormwater, we put 10% in there because quite frankly, it's desperately needed in the city. I think everybody knows the drainage and stormwater issue, so it wasn't meant to be a penalty to one fund versus the other. It just seemed like a pretty decent representation of how we can spend that money and then leave some money left behind for extraordinary unforeseen circumstances that may come up through the year. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Madam Clerk? Yes, this will move to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the chief financial officer requesting transfers to various stabilization funds from free cash.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Madam Clerk. These allocations are representative of what I hope to see ordained. These percentages fall right along with that last memo that we wrote, and the last bullet point on the memo is a transfer of $93,476 from our water-sour free cash to our stabilization account. Unfortunately, for this fiscal year, while we had a great year for the general fund, water and sewer ran pretty lean. There was $93,476 certified by the Department of Revenue, and I recommend that we just put the entire amount in there as opposed to 15% of that, because that was $14,000. So I would just recommend putting the entire $93,000 in there to basically put 100% of the certified water and sewer retained earnings into the stabilization fund, but otherwise, these transfers would represent what we are recommending as far as ordinance changes from the last communication. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any city councilors? Councilor Novoselfsky?
Just a question. You said these are based on the new amount of percentages that we're going to have a public hearing on?
Yes, sir.
So that means we can't vote on it tonight, because it's not...
Well, we can vote on it. If for some reason you didn't agree with what was recommended, we would just have to add 5% to capital improvement stabilization and 5% to the affordable housing, but we fully intend on trying to fund all six of the trust funds as we recommend it tonight. So hedging my bet a little bit here, but quicker I get this money into the trust, the quicker it starts earning money, maybe we can buy on the dips.
If I may, Mr. President, just, you know, you're just jumping the gun on transferring the new amount of percentages before we vote on it, so I would...
I'm not transferring more, I'm transferring less, and if it gets, and I will come back for supplemental if you don't agree, but I like to get this money working for us as quickly as possible.
I understand that, but, you know, you're asking for a different percentage, and you're putting a different percentage on the request to move.
I'm aware of that, that's why I'm here to tell you, I'm hedging it a little bit, but again, all we would have to do is add money, we wouldn't subtract money, so these would be the minimum amounts anyhow.
I just think you're jumping the gun before we should be, you know.
Madam Clerk, roll call the members on separate vote, the separate...
Shall the City Council approve the following transfers from free cash as follows? 667, sorry, $667,902 to the general fund stabilization fund, $667,902 to the capital improvement stabilization fund, $445,268 to the Revere High School stabilization fund, $222,634 to the other post-employment benefits trust fund, $222,634 to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and $445,268 to the Drainage, Stormwater, and Culvert Stabilization Fund. Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hare Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Did you say no or yes? Councilor Hare Mio voting yes. Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the transfers have been approved. And the second vote shall be, shall the City Council approve a transfer from water and sewer free cash to the water and sewer stabilization fund in the amount of $93,476? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hare Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, that appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 17, communication from the chief financial officer requesting various expenditures relative to the FY '25 capital improvement plan.
Mr. Viskey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. Upon certification of free cash and retained earnings, we typically then fund our fiscal year '25 capital improvement plan. These appropriations before you are those items that we recommend funding, as we call it, pay-as-you-go, so this is looking to appropriate $375,000 from our capital improvement stabilization fund to the various items listed. That would be one police vehicle, which we will supplement with an additional police vehicle that we fund through a special revenue account, so we'll buy two patrol vehicles for the police. We'll have a lease for our tasers, $50,000 represents that. Every year, we fund fire equipment, radio, gears, and equipment of $50,000. We're requesting $50,000 for elections, for pole pads for early voting, IT computer equipment, and DPW, we always run short on tree removal money, and Mr. Argenzio probably is aware, and our playground equipment repairs, so I respectfully request approval of this, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any city councilors? Madam Clerk, can we roll call the members?
Shall the City Council approve a transfer from the capital improvement stabilization fund in the amount of $375,000 for various capital improvements? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hare Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Motion, calendar item number 18, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Ethan Day, captain of Revere High School basketball team, in recognition of his status as the '24-'25 Greater Boston League co-MVP and for scoring 1,000 career points.
Councilor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the clerk.
Councilor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Madam Clerk. I would just like to add Councilor Argenzio to this motion. Otherwise, the motion speaks for itself, and thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So what?
Council President Silvestri, I've been notified by the CFO that there was one more vote to be taken relative to the water and sewer stabilization fund. It looks like the page did not scan correctly when it was added to MinuteTrack.
Mr. Viskey?
Good evening, once again, Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. Again, we just voted the general fund pay-as-you-go capital. What you see here, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, but I did print it, I thought off the agenda, but for the water and sewer enterprise stabilization fund, we are requesting appropriation in total of $265,000, and that's to purchase three pieces of equipment, a Silverado crew cab at $90,000, a one-ton dump truck at $100,000, and a Silverado regular cab truck at $75,000. We choose to pay for these as we go, so we don't have to incur any finance or interest charges, and I strongly support favorable approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any councilors? Madam Clerk, can we roll call the members?
Shall the City Council approve a transfer from the water and sewer enterprise stabilization fund in the amount of $265,000 to various water and sewer capital outlay purchases? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hare Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, back to the regular order of, nope, go ahead.
Anthony Galizia, Assistant Superintendent, 319 Charger Street, just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Keefe, the council, Richard Viskey, for getting us the equipment that we need to do the work that we love to do for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Councilor Zambudo that the mayor be requested, I'm sorry, that the mayor request the director of Parks and Recreation to make arrangements for the installation of a porta potty at Sunny Myers Playground.
Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe I'm going to have to amend my own motion, but before I do, you know, there's I, I believe I'm going to have to amend my own motion, but before I do, you know, there's some things that, I've been around a long time, some things that you just don't notice. And it's been brought to my attention that the kids are peeing in the trees, and it's, you know, I know it's crude to say that, but I mean, we really, we really do need to be reasonable about this. But the thing is that I, now I'm going to change it to request a handicap, in fact, wheelchair accessible porta potty, instead of just a porta potty. So it's a more elaborate request, but, you know, it's probably something we should have done years ago, but we won't, we won't dwell in the past, we'll move forward in the future. You know, that park is a wonderful park, it's well-used, but the trees don't deserve the abuse they're getting, so let's, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
I just have a question for my fellow Counselor. Why only Sunny Myers and not the rest of the parks?
That's a great question, you know, I, it came to my attention that this is happening at Sunny Myers Park, but I'm sure it's probably happening everywhere. So I'd, I'd be in favor of putting them everywhere. I mean, you know, let's have some sanitary conditions for the kids. I mean, what other parks, Gibson Park, you know, Costa Park, yeah. I mean, we really should have facilities for the kids. I mean, it's not a great facility, but at least in an emergency, it's something to use.
I do, I do agree, but now we're getting in the terms for it to be going to Ways and Means.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could approve this one and then have a motion to go, to put all of them in later, so I'd like to approve this one quickly, and then we can evaluate how we get, we'll do them for all of them.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we just put a motion, could we approve this motion and then put a motion on the floor to do just that, to get a financial impact study done on what it would cost to put ADA accessible porta potties in all the parks?
Great idea. Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of information, this is the most used park in the city, so that's, you know, it's very populated, so this would be a great motion for the first one. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Motion first, and then, and then, any Counselor-
Cogliandros.
Motion second, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to read the entire-
Counsel Cogliandros, Zambudos, please.
No, I do. Mr. President, could-
Miss, Counsel.
I apologize, but could we add the Ward Counselor to that, to Sunny Myers?
Absolutely.
Thank you. It was an oversight on my-
Counsel McKenna to the Sunny Myers Park. Thank you. And if we could roll call Counsel Zambudo and Counsel Cogliandro's motion.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt, through you to Madam Clerk, could we also add Counselor Garino Sawaya to this motion on the floor as well? Sharing is caring.
So let's take care of Counselors-
Please.
So, motion presented by Councilors Zambudo and McKenna that the mayor request the Director of Parks and Recreation to make arrangements for the installation of an ADA accessible porta potty at Sunny Myers Playground.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Frustrating motion by Counselors Cogliandro and Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor request a cost analysis to install ADA accessible porta potties at all playgrounds in the city of Revere.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Lieutenant Robin Pemba in recognition of his kindness and compassion in organizing a police escort for a courageous young boy battling a rare cancer.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you don't mind, I'll reserve my comments for the presentation.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Hara Mio, never mind. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-one, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Paul Baglio in recognition of his strength and determination in his battle against a rare form of cancer.
I'll reserve my comments for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hara Mio.
I don't expect to speak at the presentation, so I just want to thank my colleague for her work in bringing to light Paul's fight, and I know folks have been wondering where my hair went. We cut it and donated in honor of Paul, and just really excited for a few weeks ago, you know, the event that was held at the VFW, really exciting, and now, you know, three more years and I'll grow my hair up, but, but no, really, really appreciate it, and then to Paul, of course, you know, for you, and, and, you know, you're just such an inspiration to all of us.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number twenty-two, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor request the Department of Public Works to install appropriate signage and/or blinking lights ahead of all speed bumps to provide sufficient warning to drivers and improve roadway safety. Furthermore, that the Traffic Commission and Department of Public Works conduct a review of all existing speed bump locations to ensure proper signage is in place and report back to the City Council with its recommendations.
Counsel Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm introducing this motion in response to direct concerns that I've had from Ward Five residents who actually were complaining that they were driving down Cushman Ave, which isn't Ward Five, and Sargent Street area, and about the placement of the speed bumps that are there, but there's no appropriate warning that those speed bumps are coming up, is what they said, so they didn't know it was there. Residents have shared, shared stories of nearly missing the bumps entirely, or having to slam their brakes at the last second, in some cases, hitting the bump at full speed, which wasn't clearly visible, especially at night, which has caused residents, drivers to go airborne. They didn't know it was there, so they're driving thirty-five, forty miles an hour, not realizing, or whatever, thirty miles an hour, whatever the speed limit is. And that's not sa, it is not safe for anyone because they don't know it's there. I'm requesting that the Department of Public Works install clear signage and blinking lights ahead of all speed bumps in Revere to give drivers enough time to slow down. It, I'm also asking the Traffic Commission and DPW to conduct a comprehensive review of existing speed bump locations and ensure everything is properly marked, and report back to the Council with their findings and recommendations. It will help prevent accidents, reduce vehicle damage, and ensure consistency throughout the city. Most importantly, it shows our residents that their concerns are being taken seriously and addressed responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Check, oh, there we go. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in favor of the signage. I've turned into the financial impact study guy, so I just, we should put this out to see how much it's going to cost before we pass the motion. The way it's worded, it says to install appropriate signage, and I know the second part was to conduct a review, but I think we should either amend this one or put this into Ways and Means beforehand, whatever you'd like to do.
Ways and Means.
Or do you want to amend it to do an impact study prior, or however you want to do it?
Well, that's part of it, so yeah, do the impact study first.
Then just put it into Ways and Means if it's okay with Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you.
This will be referred to Ways and Means. All in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number twenty-three, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor request the Department of Public Works to install a pedestrian-activated crossing signal and repaint the crosswalk on Revere Street at three fifty-six Revere Street to enhance pedestrian safety. This is a highly-traveled roadway with constant traffic, and during low-traffic periods, speeding is a frequent issue. Children and pedestrians crossing at this location are at risk as vehicles often fail to stop. Implementing these improvements will help prevent accidents and improve overall safety.
Counsel Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. The intersection I'm speaking about is the corner of McKinley Street and three fifty-six Revere Street. The crosswalk is faded and needs repainting to increase visibility. A pedestrian-activated signal will help alert drivers and give people a safer way to cross. These are low-cost improvements and can make a big difference in preventing accidents before they happen. Residents and business owners have raised concerns about the safety of this intersection, and I believe it's our responsibility to act on those concerns and make Revere's streets safer for everyone. Now, I understand there's a school there, and there is a stop sign, crosswalk signal a little bit further down, but what happens at night, when, when cars are traveling and there's no traffic, they're flying right past that school, and the kids get out of dance school quickly, and the kids cross the street and cars are flying by, and they don't see them, especially if there's a car parked on each side. And cars usually do park on that side of, the opposite side of Revere Street, where you can't park just to pick up their kids. So if there's cars parked on both sides, the cars are flying down on Revere Street, you can't see the kids crossing, so it's really important, and I would appreciate if we can get this done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I have to say something, this is across the street from my school. And I want to thank you for putting this in.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-four, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor be requested to approve the attached resolution relative to animal, animal control and responsible dog ownership, especially at Gibson Park.
Counsel Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, as the Ward Five City Counselor, I've heard from many residents concerned about off-leash dogs and pet waste violations at Gibson Park, which continue despite the presence of signage. I just had signs put up all over Mills Ave that people had requested. Now, these issues create safety hazards for pedestrians, children, and pet owners, leading to some residents to feel unsafe and avoid using the park now. Additionally, pet waste poses health risks, especially as warmer weather draws more families to the area. In response, I propose several actions. One, increasing patrol by animal control to enforce the leash laws and issue citations, something that hasn't been done. Collaborating with Public Works and Parks and Rec on public education efforts, exploring the feasibility of a public reporting system via the Piper. The Piper works amazingly, I tried it this weekend to see if it works, to address violations promptly. Reviewing and considering increased penalties for leash and waste violations, and potentially adding a full-time animal control officer in fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. While Gibson Park currently lacks dog waste stations, it has two, it needs a couple more. I have discussed with Mayor Keefe the possibility of installing them, and stations will also be installed along Rice Ave. I encourage the city to partner with community groups and pet owners to promote responsible pet ownership. By adopting these resolutions, we can assure that Gibson Park remains a safe and welcoming space for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-five, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the police chief to increase patrols to combat speeding on Cushman Ave, mainly between the speed table and the intersection of New Hall Street.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Where the speed table has worked, it slows people down up to that point, it then becomes a race to the next intersection. With the new measures that we have to go through, I don't know if everybody knows what we have to do now to get a speed table or a speed bump done. You have to have a community or the neighborhood fill out a petition and sign a petition, and then fill out an entire application to send it into the city. It's a lot of work to get that done, so if they can get it done, and it's costly as well, and I'm just hoping that we can get this area monitored more often, because that intersection of Cushman Ave and Adams Street specifically is, I'm surprised nobody's gotten hit over there, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-six, motion presented by Counsel Kelly that the City Council order to a public hearing the following proposed zoning ordinance amendment. A zoning ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to off-street parking. Be it ordained by the city of Revere as follows. Section one, chapter seventeen, two eight, off-street parking and loading, Article one generally, is hereby amended by inserting the following new section. Section seventeen, two eight, oh three, oh, relief. Reduction in parking space ratio requirements shall require a special permit from the City Council.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm bringing this motion kind of as a follow-up to the motion that was recently submitted regarding changing the ZBA to an elected body, which I am in full support of. However, considering that that may take a while, if it even turns out to be successful, the change that this motion is requesting is something that we can get down, get done now as a City Council, and it does not require a lengthy home rule petition process. Currently, requests for reductions in parking requirements are done by way of variances through the ZBA. This motion would require that those requests are instead done by way of a special permit through the City Council. I think we can all agree that parking requirements are a cornerstone of urban planning, they directly impact traffic flow, alter street congestion, affect public space usage, and emergency service access. And since they have such broad implications, they are better suited to be dealt with by an elected body, like the City Council, which is directly answerable to voters rather than an appointed body, such as the ZBA. The ZBA's unelected nature means it lacks the same direct accountability to residents that we as elected council members have. The bottom line is that we as council members are held to account and answer to residents, demonstrated by residents either voting us in or voting us out. Therefore, important decisions such as these regarding parking reductions should rest with us and not the unelected members of the ZBA. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? This will be referred to a public hearing on April twenty-eighth.
Calendar item number twenty-seven, motion presented by Counsel Novoselfsky that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to lower the speed limit on Campbell Ave from Centennial Avenue to Revere Beach Parkway from twenty-five miles an hour to twenty miles an hour.
Counsel Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Campbell Ave over the past several years has become a pass-through street to avoid Noshaw Road and the lights at the Sunoco Station. And we've had at least nine, in the last two years, nine automobile accidents with many residents' vehicles being damaged. Just last week, we had a rollover in the lower part of Campbell Ave where it was to a drunk driver, and the person actually, I mean, rolled over the car, smashed all the windows in, and got out of the car and tried to walk away. But, you know, they did catch the person, and I just think it's, it's time to try to reduce that speed limit to down to twenty mile an hour. You know, we already have a speed bump there further back, but what happens is, once people pass the speed bump, just like Counsel Cogliandro said, they take off, like bad out of hell. So we moved the automatic speed limit sign, the flashing sign, down to that particular area just last, the week before this happened. But it's terrible in the street. Everybody, everybody in that street is complaining and in danger of their lives. That's how bad it is. So I'm asking that the Traffic Commission reduce the speed limit down to twenty mile an hour on Campbell Ave. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other City Councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-eight, motion presented by Counsel Kelly that the mayor request the Director of Elder Affairs to offer a program for CPR, AED, and emergency preparedness training at the Senior Center during regular business hours.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was brought to my attention, actually, by a resident that a program was being offered by the Department of Public Health, I believe, last Thursday, and I think it was held at seven PM at night at the Garfield School, and this resident, who happens to be a senior citizen, was saying it would be more convenient if something like this was also held and put together and offered at the Senior Center during business hours, and would make it more convenient for seniors to take advantage of something like that. So I thought I'd put this motion in, and hopefully we can provide that to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually spoke to Adrian McGuire, the Director of Emergency Preparedness, and this is actually something that's in the works currently. This will be offered to seniors at the Senior Center. The staff, I know, gets trained once a year in CPR and AED. I know, because I did it when I was employed there, and they, they currently still do that, but then they have the lifesavers training, which was what Counsel Kelly had referenced last week at the Garfield School. I did get a call from a senior as well, who was a little upset that there was no transportation in the city, whether it was from the Senior Center or another city department, but she was a little upset that there wasn't anything more centrally located, say at the Remney or the High School or the Susan B. Anthony, but there are going to be four lifesaver programs a year, and I think it's great that the seniors will get trained in the CPR, and when I spoke to Adrian, I know she was really excited about getting this going. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Garino Sawaya.
I'm also thank you. The same senior reached out to me as- I'm also, thank you. The same senior reached out to me as well. She was actually looking for a ride, because she doesn't drive at night.
Excellent. Great motion, Counselor. Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Council item number 29, motion presented by Counselor Hermio that the city council order to a public hearing an ordinance further amending wage theft policies in the city of Revere.
Counselor Hermio.
Mr. President, thank you. We filed this, I filed this, this motion to revamp our waste theft ordinance. As folks know, in Massachusetts, about $100 million is lost in revenue from waste theft, which is not how much people are owed, although a lot of people are owed a lot of millions of dollars. This is the revenue we can actually bring into the Commonwealth from waste theft. And cities and towns around the Commonwealth, of course, are not immune to this, and the workers that work and live here are not immune to this, and therefore, our revenue here in the city of Revere is not immune to waste theft. So, I want to dive a little bit more into this ordinance, but this would, at the very least, ensure that we have a complaint process, that be some accountability for folks, that employer, employees feel like they can, that they can, they have a process that protects them, and that we're using things like TIFs efficiently to ensure that we're holding, we're holding contractors accountable who may not be playing above board. But I want to talk a little bit more about this, and I've discussed with the chairman of Legislative Affairs, and we have a little plan for this. I think we're, if it pleases the, if it pleases the court, I guess, if it pleases the council, we could send this to the Committee on Workforce and Sustainability. Hopefully, it'll get referred out to a public hearing, then back to Legislative Affairs for a final review. And if that's amenable with you, Mr. President, that's the way we'd like to do it.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Hermio, you wanted to go to committee first and then to a public hearing? Or straight to a public hearing?
Yeah. We can do sustainability, talk a little bit more there, allow some folks to come in and tell us why this is important, some community members that are affected by waste theft, and then we-
Prior to ordering it to a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and like it to go to Committee on Sustainability.
On Counselor Hermio's motion, to send it to committee, please.
Council item number 30, motion presented by Counselor Haas that the mayor request National Grid to relocate pole number 5154-7, located at 321 Charger Street. The pole is located in the driveway and parking lot of the city's Wellness Center and Teamworks Building. There have been several instances of drivers hitting this pole due to its location.
Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was something that was brought to my attention. I'm not even sure if this is possible, but I'd like to reach out to our good friends at National Grid and see if this is something that they can do. I've had a number of residents at the Wellness Center and going to Teamworks to play soccer that have hit the pole located directly in the middle of the main drive parking lot there. And at night, this poses a huge safety issue for someone turning the corner from the Teamworks side of the building, backing up or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Council item number 31, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the city council approve an act relative to term limits for elected officials in the city of Revere.
Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. This will be referred to Legislative Affairs, but I just wanted to touch briefly on it. This is something that I truly believe in. It's something that I ran on in 2021, and was one of the first motions I put forward as a city counselor in 21. It didn't get much support then, so I figured I'd put it up now. And in recent, recent surveys have indicated approximately five out of six of Americans, 75% are in favor of elected term limits. The overwhelming support reflects a national sentiment which resonates deeply within our community. It underscores the desire for a government that is responsive, accountable to its constituents, rather than one that is entrenched in power. Since 2012, incumbents have won 97% of the time in elections, which further highlights the need for term limits to help level the playing field. The advantages of fundraising, name recognition enjoyed by long-term incumbents can often disenfranchise new candidates and discourage community members from getting involved in the political process. We have seen this desire manifest nationally, and particularly, the support for a president who ran on the promise of draining the swamp, and the swamp being longtime political people that overstayed their welcome. I believe that serving our community is a noble endeavor, and that's why I propose 10 years for an elected official. This duration not only allows the meaningful contribution to our city, but also ensures that we remain accountable to the taxpayers we serve. After 10 years, of officials become vested in health insurance for life and potential of longevity payments can inadvertently lead to a system where incumbents feel less compelled to be innovative and advocate for the community's best interests. Historically, our founding fathers recognized that and prolonged the power of undermined democracy. This understanding is reflected in tradition of U.S. presidents voluntarily stepping down after two terms. We have seen consequences of extenuating tenure in cities just next door, like Everett, where complacently can foster a disconnect between officials and the constituents they serve. Implementing term limits will no longer only promote accountability to transparency, but will also help prevent the kind of isolation that can occur in positions of power. I want to clarify, I am no way suggesting that anyone on this council or in this city is in doing anything infribulous, and I believe that term limits can serve as a safeguard against potential complacency and enrich our local governance. If we are truly committed to doing what is right for the Revere resident, I urge my fellow council members to support this home rule petition. Together, we can ensure that our residents remain vibrant and responsive in all the needs. Thank you. Any other city counselors?
Mr. President?
Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. We usually agree on most things, but I totally disagree with term limits. If a voter is going to the ballot box, and they're confident and they're comfortable voting for an incumbent, we shouldn't be taking that right away from them. I think we need to give the voter a little bit more credit. We have term limits. They're called voters. If they're comfortable with that incumbent, they should be allowed to vote for them. I think we've talked, and the country has talked about fraud in elections, manipulating ballots. This, to me, is a manipulation. We don't like that people are going in and voting for the same people, so we're going to take that right away from them. They no longer have that. I don't see, that's the intelligence of the voter. They're going in, they're voting, they choose to support an incumbent, and I think they have that right. And I wouldn't want to manipulate the system in saying that after so many terms, you can no longer vote. That takes their right away, and it takes the voters' right away. I know candidates have run on term limits, and that's their prerogative. If they want to put in their campaign platform or in their statement that they feel as though they're only going to be around for two or three terms or for 10 years, that's their choice, and they can convey that to the public. It shouldn't apply to everyone, and I think that we're going down a slippery slope. If we stop candidates from being able to run, what else are we going to stop? How else are we going to manipulate the system? Just because some people don't like that incumbents keep getting voted in, doesn't mean we can take that right away from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may, permission to speak? Thank you. And I agree, Counselor, and that is why, if you would like to get into a longevity of politics or make a career out of this, which I don't think any political seat should be a career of, but if you would, you would have the ability to serve five terms as a school committee member, you'd have the ability to serve five terms as a ward counselor, five terms as an at-large counselor, and three terms as mayor. That's 42 years. That's a lifetime of politics. I don't think we're erasing anyone or removing them. I think we're keeping people honest, and that's just my opinion. Thank you. And Counselor?
Can I respond to that?
Yes, you can.
So, what is not being honest? I mean, if people like to be counselor, they like to be mayor, what are you going to be shifting from school committee to ward counselor to counselor-at-large to mayor? I don't think anyone's being dishonest, and I don't think anyone's owning a seat. You don't own a seat. Every two years, your term expires, voters go in, they go into the ballot box, and they vote. I don't think we need to insult the intelligence of a voter and say, "You're not doing the right thing. We don't like what you're doing." That, to me, is just against, every citizen in the United States has the right to run for office. They have the right to seek reelection, and every citizen in the United States has the right to vote for who they think they're most comfortable with. And I don't want to take that right away from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Greenos Swaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin by being completely transparent. I supported this. In fact, I asked to be included as a maker of it. Like many, I believed term limits might be a good way to make room for fresh voices and prevent people from staying in office too long. But after giving it some serious thought, I changed my position, and I think it's important to say why. As a first-term counselor in Ward 5, I'm learning every day how much time it takes to do a job effectively. You don't just walk in and start passing motions or fixing citywide issues. It takes time to understand the system, build relationships, and earn the trust of your residents. And it takes even more time to turn a good idea into real results. If this motion passes, we risk removing good leaders just as they've hit their stride. We risk forcing someone out who's experienced, effective, and connected to their community, only to replace them with someone who may be less prepared, simply because the seat became available. That's not good government. It's a gamble with real consequences for the neighborhoods we represent. And let's not forget, we already have term limits. They're called elections. They are called elections. Every two years for counselors and every four years for mayors. We have to stand before the voters to earn their support. If we're not doing the job, then they have the power to make a change and to get us out. But if we are doing the jobs, and our community trusts us to keep going, then they should have the right to keep us in office. That's democracy. That's the democracy we live in. So while I understand and respect your intentions behind the motion, I cannot support it, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to applaud you for this motion, because I am in full support of it. I really think, well, whenever I talk to people, whoever I'm talking to, whenever this issue comes up, people are in favor of term limits. There is no doubt about it. They want term limits. It def, an incumbent definitely dissuades a newcomer from even throwing their hat into the ring. And I believe everyone should have the opportunity to serve their community. If we're truly talking about democracy and what our residents want and what voters want, then maybe this should be something that should be entertained by a ballot vote, or even a non-binding ballot vote, or question, or something like that. If you really want to know what your constituents want and what the people we're representing, what they want and how they feel, maybe we should even go that way with this. But I am in full support of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that this motion has merit, because some 30 years ago, I ran for office on the platform of term limits. I'm not ashamed to say that, because, because I got here, and I found out I make a difference. Now, I don't think anybody on this council or in this city would ever say that I'm complacent. I get things done. I do what I think is right. People don't always agree with me, but they know where I'm coming from. So, I said to myself, I said right away after the first term that I got elected, that I realized that I could make a difference up here, that I changed my mind. And people have used that, or tried to use that against me in elections, and say, "He ran on term limits. He's been there all these years." And, but the answer is, I'm here all these years because the people put me here. The people know that I do the job, and I do the job for them, and I'm always concerned for the taxpayer. So, I changed my mind like others, but it wasn't because of the lucrative money I was going to make as a city council, because we all know we work for pennies an hour here, because it's a full-time job if you're doing the job. And I enjoy the job because I make a difference, and that's why I can't support you on this. But I do believe it has a lot of merit. And I know that a lot of people say they want term limits, but when they see someone like myself that they think is doing a good job, they want to put them back, so they're conflicted. But in a poll, they're going to say I'm for term limits. But when the rubber meets the road, they're really not for term limits. That's the way I see it. And the term limits, my colleague from White 5, you know, term limits is every two years. It's an election. The people can throw you out at any time, do the wrong thing, and you're gone. So, I can't support you on this, but I do respect you for putting it in.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have great respect for you, great respect for the motion. When you put it that way and when you read it, it is interesting to say, "Oh, I could do 10 years as an at-large counselor," and then jump 10 years to a ward counselor. You know, we've seen the last election that we had here in Revere, just what new blood can do to a city council. It rejuvenates it. It adds fresh energy, fresh life, and we had six new counselors get on during the last election. So, I don't think it's a, it's an idea that would breed a lot of new blood. You'd still have counselors in for 10 years, and then who else is going to run after those 10 years? What if no one runs? Why not 12 years? Why not 14 years? But, like I said, great respect for you, Mr. President. I just think we should leave it up to the voters like we always have. You look around this room, and there's quite a few portraits of counselors and mayors who have served for well over 10 years. And I'd like to think they're important figures in the city, and I know I've leaned on my veteran counselors here who have been here 10 years and more. And that means a lot to have that mix of veteran counselors and new counselors. I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Okay. This will be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Council item number 32, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request municipal inspections in conjunction with the Conservation Commission to investigate the source of illegal dumping along Sales Creek and issue fines to the responsible party or parties. Further, that the city install straw bales along the banks of Sales Creek or as determined by the Conservation Commission to prevent pollutants and debris from entering the waterway, causing harm to wildlife.
I know.
Counselor?
Me. Thank you, Mr. President. Walking Furlong Drive that abuts Sales Creek, this is an important waterway, a key part of the ecosystem of Belle Isle Marsh and the cities of Revere, Chelsea, Winthrop, and Boston. The flow of this vital waterway is being stopped by litter and debris from the current businesses, such as Majestic Auto, Full Rack Smokehouse, and Sullivan Tire, and on the adjacent side of the old Lee's Trailer Park, where dumping and littering in this creek is happening. This creek flows from Chelsea underneath Lee Burbank Highway, under the Suffolk Downs property, into Belle Isle Marsh, and out to the ocean. It has many different species of birds and wildlife that depend on this waterway. These businesses mentioned should be accountable for dumping oil, tires, and litter, and the city should take action to protect this vital resource. So, on the city's part, I am asking that the city put hay bales along the businesses that abuts Sales Creek from the Full Rack Smokehouse Restaurant that starts on Lee Burbank Highway, along Lee's Trailer Park property, to end, to the end of Furlong Drive. Doing this will slow down debris and- Doing this will slow down debris and litter and will help protect this natural resource and the wildlife that lives there. And by the way, this waterway was just cleaned, and it's back to deplorable conditions. So I'm just asking if the city will do their part to help protect this waterway that's vital to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other city councilors? That's it. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Mr. President?
Councilor?
Just a point of personal privilege.
State your point.
I just would like to bring to the attention of my colleagues and to the viewers at home of the sad situation that we're facing in the Commonwealth as it relates to, to revenue. There's been a lot of talk in the last few weeks about trade deficits and, you know, tariffs and all this, that, and the other thing. But I really would like to point out that the federal government cut $104 million for Massachusetts education just last week, public education. This here, Massachusetts, is the home of public education. And as a result, we have some of the most advanced technologies in the country and in the world. As a result, we have some of the highest per capita GDP in the entire world. In fact, we have a $5,000 per capita trade deficit with the federal government. On average, the Massachusetts residents sends the federal government $5,000 more dollars than it receives in federal benefits. And I bring this up because thanks to these cuts, Mr. President, our own Revere Public School District is facing million, potentially millions of dollars in cuts from the federal funding that they've already promised. Now, a lot of people out there are saying COVID, oh, it's COVID money. Well, you can't design and prepare and engineer a new HVAC system for the Garfield School, for example, overnight. So when people say, we're going to make our schools safe, and they're cutting the funding that is going to ensure that we have good, adequate HVAC, they're BSing us. Now, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I'm getting real riled up about this, but Massachusetts is the single largest contributor to the national coffers, and we're facing this, and our students are now facing potentially having to study and go to school in harmful environments? I think that's shameful, absolutely 1,000% shameful. These projects take a long time, and not to mention that our taxpayer here in Revere is getting ripped off. Now, I'm still unclear what exactly we should do about this, but I just want to flag that for folks because we are facing real tight times here, and we are under attack. Our students are under attack, our taxpayers are under attack, and, and, you know, as a proud product of the public education system, I just cannot stand idly by that we're going to lose millions of dollars for the well-being of our kids. We need to provide safe environments for kids. And with that, I yield back, thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the latitude. We're here at the early April, and we're not meeting till the end of the month. And I just want to take this opportunity to wish everybody a happy Easter. I want to wish everybody, for my Jewish faith, a happy Passover, and we should be safe, and everybody enjoy their holidays and be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cogliandro?
Point of personal privilege.
State your point.
Yesterday, we lost Revere resident. He was so much more than that, and I want to just say, rest in peace and wish my condolences to Al Barrell. He was a, I grew, growing up, I was part of the music scene. I loved live music. Nothing made me feel more welcome and alive than when I would go to see a show. And he was the person responsible for bringing that type of music, mainly the hardcore scene, to Boston. He was also one of the founding people involved with the straight edge movement. For people who don't know what that is, that's people who don't drink, they don't do drugs. He was an icon. He's somebody that I looked up to, and if anybody knew Al, I'm sure you listened to, listening to his SSD control albums. I want to send condolences to Ms. Nancy Barrell, who was my teacher in high school. That was her husband, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Haas?
I'd just like to echo Councilor Cogliandro's comments regarding Al Barrell. You know, I had Nancy Barrell, her first year as a teacher, I had her in advanced composition class, I think it was maybe 1996, but, but she was fantastic. Her and Al shared an incredible life together. They had an incredible bond, and I just want to say we're thinking of Nancy and, and their family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? And that closes tonight's business. Thank you.